Okay, I'm going to call the order of the April 14th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Education. It's at Hubbard Middle School. Mrs. Hutchins, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Ms. Gregory.
Here.
Ms. Erickson.
Here.
Ms. Grahamlin.
Here.
Ms. Lawren.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here. Mr. Matheson, would you like to lead us on a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
The United States of America. And to a republic where it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do any board members have requested modifications to the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none. A couple of opening comments from me. As of tomorrow, we will have fully implemented our return to loan plans for this school year. As such, much of this agenda begins to look forward to areas like high school graduation, next steps to roll out an elementary Spanish language arts curriculum that was first raised by our community members a few years ago, and an adjustment to our fee schedule for next school year. As we begin the final portion of this school year, we look forward to seating our new board at the beginning of May and continued planning for a successful start to the 2021-22 school year. Next up is public comments. All right, we have no public comments, and there were no public comments emailed to the board. So we will move quickly right to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So just a couple of things I want to share with the board on the front end of the agenda this evening. Jahan, I don't feel like my mic is cutting in and out. So just wanted to...
Mr. Ed McMahon, Mr. Paulson.
Sorry about that. We'll try this one. Feel better? Perfect. So as Mr. Paulson mentioned at the front end of the meeting tonight, we obviously have continued to work through this week our transitions. On Monday, our middle school students started with the five-day-a-week plan. We were excited about that opportunity and excited to see our buildings, middle school buildings with more kids in them. Tomorrow, our elementary students start their extended day. And again, excited to see those transitions and again, see the work that's gone through. And I just want to continue in the theme of thank you as we make the transition. Thank you to our teachers that certainly have helped us with carrying out our plans. Thank you to our leadership teams, both members of the senior leadership team that are over to my right, as well as our principals who have worked incredibly hard to execute our plans. Again, we're just excited to see where we are and excited to... Okay, so just a couple of other things, updates this evening. So one of the things that we have been working on is we continue with planning for next year. Is we've been working both with Illinois State Board of Education and a number of other area superintendents to understand what expectations will be around remote options for next year. As we continue to plan into next school year, we've had a team that's been working on that internally and really mapping out what remote options could look like into next year. And if we do plan to actually bring an update on that topic to the people of committee the whole meeting. So in a couple of weeks, we're going to share an update on where our work is. We're hoping to get a little bit of guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education around what that option was potentially going to look like for next year. I'm not optimistic we're going to have that by the April committee of the whole meeting. And so we wanted to continue that work because again, what that option looks like and who it's available to within the district is obviously going to be an important part of our planning as we obviously plan a full resumption of an impersonal person's schedule into next year. So plan on that for April. Also want to mention that the April committee of the whole meeting, one of the other things we're going to bring an update and a discussion to the board around is the use of some federal grant dollars that have come available to school districts. There have been three different versions of recovery dollars that school districts have had access to both this school year and the next couple of school years. And again, as we plan for next year, both opportunities that will be available to our students as well as opportunities to work on our learning acceleration plans, opportunities to support kids in the social-emotional space into next year. I do believe that those federal dollars are going to be really important in helping us to be able to map out that plan. And so we've been working hard on a framework for how it is that we believe we can most effectively utilize those dollars to support our students in our community and plan to bring that discussion to the April meeting as well. And so again, April is going to look a lot like a planning conversation for next year. So the use of that grant dollar, of those federal dollars is also going to really come in the form of an update to our learning acceleration plans into next year. And so again, we will continue that conversation in April. Want to send a quick thank you to the city of Wheaton. So as the board knows, I've shared before, our activities directors at both high schools, Dr. Stellwagen, Mrs. Norris at Wheaton North, have been working through the early part of the spring on some performance opportunities for a number of our performing ensembles that includes both our theater programs, our show choir programs. And so through a partnership with the city of Wheaton, we've extended an opportunity for us to do some of those performances at the Memorial Park Band Shell that required a special use permit to be able to extend that opportunity. So actually, this thank you is both to the city of Wheaton and the Wheaton Park District, whose property that is the park district was phenomenal in helping us to create that opportunity. But the city of Wheaton needed to clear the path, which they did. So the mayor of the city of Wheaton had to issue an executive order to clear that path which the city council ratified right after spring break. And so again, we're excited that performance schedule kind of starts at the end of April and continues through May. And we're going to have the opportunity to use that band shell for, I believe, about 12 different nights throughout that window of time, which great opportunity for students. Wanted to mention that a couple of weeks ago, we released a reminder to the community that applications are now being accepted for the Citizens Advisory Committee. We have continued to meet with that committee this year virtually and look forward to continuing that work into next year. And so we've received a number of applications for the committee, which is great, but hope to continue to get a few more applications. Wanted to mention that we actually closed out our vaccine clinic today. So we finished our second dose clinic at Bauer just in time for the space where that vaccine clinic has been operating to turn back into a lunchroom for Bauer tomorrow. And so timing of that worked out perfectly. And again, we vaccinated about 1,800 people at that clinic, staff from District 200, staff from seven other school districts, and a couple of our community partners that were in the 1B group. So huge thank you to a number of individuals from the school district and the benefits department, our school service center that supported that effort. It was a big lift, but certainly nice to now know that anybody who wanted to be vaccinated has had that opportunity in District 200. So they will have received their second shot. And then just finally want to mention that if you go by either the high schools and now including our middle schools after school, you're going to see that student activities are in full swing. We're in kind of the final transition where the fall sports that got rescheduled to early spring are wrapping up here in the next week, a week and a half, plus all of our traditionally spring sports that now are considered summer sports in this year's schedule have ramped up. And so again, just nice to see our buildings in full use. And again, I want to mention with that, our athletic departments, our activities departments, our staff are doing a phenomenal job of continuing to focus on COVID protocols, make sure what we're doing, we're doing in compliance with our health department partners, but has been really exciting to see. So I think that's all I've got for tonight. I'll answer any questions if you have any of that or keep going with the agenda.
I just want to comment on a couple of things. The, you touched on the performances at the new band shell. You know, not only is it a great facility that's been added to downtown Wheaton, it'll be the grand opening nowadays. It has not been really used for anything. And this is one of the few times that we will be able to see the award-winning show choirs and the performances of many of the, you know, the arts that have been literally shut down practically for a year. It also coincides with the opening of the tents in downtown Wheaton, and that'll be on May 1st. So you know, it'd be a great night to go have dinner downtown and then go, you know, see a performance. So you know, it's a special event that we'll be looking forward to. So, and where will the dates be presented? Where will we be able to access those?
The schools are presenting them, so I do want to mention there won't be unlimited access to that because there are still capacity limits inside of Memorial Park, just to make sure that we're adhering to all of the protocols. But the high schools have the dates and have been sharing the dates as they can, so.
Okay, so somewhere I'll be able to see them. Okay, great. Okay. Something you don't want to miss. Thank you.
I just want to circle back from the last meeting to make sure that everybody is feeling comfortable with the one day for prepping and everything is ready to go and...
Yeah, so we had a, I think, a really productive day last Wednesday with our middle school teachers today. Our elementary teachers had their remote day. And again, just in, I think, connecting with some of our principals and those doing the work, I think folks were ready to go. Chris, Melissa, anything you want to add to that?
No, I would just second that. Checked in with all of our principals today, and certainly it was a valuable day, but we're prepared and set to go, so.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Schuler on his opening comments? Okay, next up is our consent agenda. We have 14 items on our consent agenda tonight. Number one is approval to post an AP human geography textbook for community review. Number two is approval to post AP statistics textbook for community review. Number three is approval to post culinary arts I and II textbook for community review. Number four is approval of high school novels. Number five is approval of a food service management emergency contract extension for high schools. Number six is approval of Organic Life LLC K8 food service management contract renewal. Number seven is approval of custodial cleaning services bid. Number eight is approval of single student and small group student transportation services contract extension. Number nine is approval of the long-term disability policy, or approval of the renewal of the long-term disability policy. Number 10 is approval of fast bridge assessment software. Number 11 is approval to purchase network switches. And number 12 is approval of bills payable on payroll. Number 13 is approval of minutes for March 10th, 2021, open and closed, March 24th, 2021, special meeting. And approval to destroy recordings of plural sessions prior to November 2019 as allowable by law. And finally, number 14 is approval of the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from this consent agenda? Okay, Dr. Schuler, any information to share on these items?
Just for really quick comments. One, the... One, the high school novels. We did receive some community feedback on the novels. I think that's been shared with the board. There was an update to it that I believe is in your green folder tonight, so we certainly appreciate the community input and feedback on those resources. Two, there were a couple of board questions on the organic life extension and especially the extension for the high school piece. So just a quick comment on that. A couple of years ago, we moved the high schools off of the federal lunch program, and we did that to give us a little bit of flexibility around food service for our high school students. And so we made an adjustment to that this year, just given the reality of how food is being served in our buildings this year. Candidly, that flexibility is seen much more through à la carte opportunities and some of the food service we're not doing this year, and I don't know how much of it we'll be doing into next year. And so this does not mean that forever the high schools are back on the program. We do hope to kind of return to that original plan and contract, but just with kind of the uncertainty going into next year and the way that the reimbursement works, both for the district and for the vendor, it just seemed like it made sense to continue with that plan into next year. And then just finally, I want to recognize that number seven, the approval of the custodial cleaning services bid, we, the district has partnered with ABM for a while, and they did in fact come out as the vendor that's been recommended through the bid process again this year. And so we were happy to have the opportunity to rebid that service to make sure that, obviously, that opportunity meets the board and the district's needs, but we are pleased to bring a recommendation to continue that partnership with ABM. They've been a great partner, especially during the last 12-plus months of COVID have gone above and beyond in partnering with JR and Bill and our buildings, and so pleased to continue our partnership with them this evening. That's it.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I have a question. The custodial cleaning bid, it was one of the questions from one of the board members addressed the, you know, in the past, we had some issues of benefits and so on. How's that been resolved?
Yeah, so I think that there were some questions that came up at a point in time where a contract was actually being negotiated with ABM and one of their unions. To be honest, I think the concerns were resolved at that point in that contract negotiation, that the district wasn't actually directly a party too. But again, we've got no concern with the way that the ABM employees have been...
So it's smoothed out and we're good? Okay, that's the word. And then the, just to be clear on 14, now we're issuing, which is the personnel report, we issued termination letters?
That's not on the personnel report, that's under an action item.
I'm sorry, I'll hold my question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just have two quick clarifications. The first one on the food service emergency contract extension for the high schools. Well, we have flexibility with organic life as we go through the school year. If things change, then we can bring some different food service options back for students, you know, as we get into maybe even 2022.
Yeah, if you heard the question, I do want to just mention that organic life, whether they are on the food service program or not, they serve quality opportunities to our students, and I'm positively going to continue to do so. So Lisa, the question was just, would we have any flexibility during the year if circumstances change during the year and we wanted to make an adjustment?
As far as being on the National School Lunch Program, this contract extension would go through June 30th of 2022. As far as the food offerings, there's not necessarily flexibility, but there might be opportunities to enhance some of it, you know, with the National School Lunch Program. But as far as going off the program during this year, we wouldn't be able to do that until June 30th of 2022.
Yeah, I think my intention, my question was, can we enhance the program as the, as the school years goes, as we go through the next school year, if we had more flexibility on how we serve and what kind of food product we serve without going off of the program?
Yes, and I think if, you know, depending on what happens in this next year, if we could, you know, with the à la carte offerings, things like that, we could certainly do that and still be on the National School Lunch Program.
Okay, good. And then my, thank you. My other question was really on the high school novels. Just, I just want to clarify, these are new novels that we're adding into the mix for our ELA program that can be chosen by departments or teachers based on particular units of study? We're not pulling any other ones out, they're just additional novels we're bringing to the table?
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Before we leave that, one other comment I have on number 12, which is the bills payable. I'm really happy how well we've changed the format with the new accounting system, explaining all the payments, and it's very helpful in reviewing all those, and it's really a step up from what we had in the past.
Is this the first year of the new software? Yeah, it's one of those unforgotten things that we actually rolled out a whole new business in HR software, right? During all this?
It's kind of background.
Yeah. Congrats to the team for that. Okay, any other questions? Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, please call a roll.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Manneson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda has been approved as presented. We move to our action items. We have seven action items tonight. The first three are somewhat related, so as I introduce this, I'm going to ask Dr. Schuler to maybe kind of introduce the topic for all three of them. So the first action item is adoption of a resolution authorizing the non-reemployment of full-time, first, second, and third-year, non-tenured certified staff. Dr. Schuler, any information on this? And maybe, should I read all three of these right now?
Sure, you want to do all three?
Why don't I read all three and then we'll come back after Dr. Schuler, we can have some discussion, and then I'll read each one again as we get into the actual motion in a second. So again, the first one I read, the second one is adoption of a resolution authorizing the non-reemployment of part-time and non-tenured certified staff. And then the third one is adoption of a resolution for reducing, I'm sorry, adoption of a resolution for reduction in force dismissal and termination of classified staff. So those three are all similar. I'm going to let Dr. Schuler introduce what these are and kind of the basis for them here tonight.
Yeah, so just one little bit of context, and again, a thank you. The adjustments that were made at the front end of this year, especially in the Human Resource Department, as we allocated staff for this year and moved staff members into positions kind of based on the way that the staffing plan was shuffled this year with the adjustment of our learning plans, it was a really big jigsaw puzzle at the beginning of this year. And so just want to say a huge thank you to Charlie and his team and Human Resource. They will ride up until the start of school and ensuring that those pieces fell into place, both our in-person opportunities, our virtual academies at the elementary and middle school, as well as our high school plan. So a little bit of context for these three items. Each year, there is a date identified in the school code where you do have to take action to release any staff that you may not need into the following year. And so all three of these items, we do address with the board at this time in each school year. This year, it's actually a little bit heavier item just because we hired more staff on one-year contracts for this year, again, as we were kind of moving the pieces around and hiring staff at the, right up to the start of the year for our virtual academy and some of our in-person programs. And so this does not mean that all of the staff members being released under these three action items tonight will not be back with us next year. In fact, I'm sure many of them will be, but until that staffing plan is solidified, and I mentioned at the front end of the meeting, we're going to have a lot of discussion at the April committee, the whole meeting, about some opportunities for next year that are going to restore some positions within the district and some opportunities. And so that will bring a number of these positions back, but until we know that for sure, until all of our retirements and leaves are solidified for this year, we do want to take this action just to make sure that the board and the district are not in a position where we are overstaffed for any reason. And so we take this action to release, and then obviously we'll hire back. So three separate items, the first are full-time certified positions. The second resolution will be for our part-time positions, where in many cases, that's just a matter of determining what amount of part-time those individuals will be next year as the pieces come together. And then the third action item is for our classified positions. So you do need to take each one separately, but that's a little bit of context for all three. Dr. Kyle, anything else that you want to add to that?
Dr. Schuler did a good job. I think right now, like you said, a big puzzle piece we're in the process right now, looking at which ones we can bring back. That's what we're working through right now in HR, so good job.
Any questions or comments from board members? I think I did the math, I think that was about 90 or 95 team members?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go through these one at a time. Action item one is, can I ask for a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time, first, second, and third-year, non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code Section 24-11?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booth. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Manneson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. Okay, action item number one has passed. Now we're going to move to action item number two. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code Section 24-11?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Manneson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. Okay, action item number two has been approved as presented, and then the third action item of the trio here, can I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing reduction in force of educational support personnel effective June 10, 2021, or the last workday during the 2021 school term, whichever is later? Motion and second? Moved, moved by Mr. Hamlin?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Booth. Mrs. Hutchinson, can I, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Manneson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. Okay, action item number three has been approved as presented. Okay, on to the next four action items. The first one is approval of high school graduation production vendor. Dr. Schuler, any information or comments?
Yeah, I'm going to first just ask Dr. Kyle just a couple of quick comments. He's been working with a committee of students, parents, some staff on plans for the class of 2021, and just will set a little bit of context for this recommendation tonight, so.
Yeah, so when we first got together, it's like a month and a half ago, one of the biggest things was is to make sure that this class of kids get to be together, and graduation was the number one piece. So right now, that's what we're working on. Obviously, the proposal you're getting is to enhance the graduation ceremony in any way, but right now, we're in phase four, so we are planning at least that each grad, we're working on that. We could at least bring two people to graduation right now if things get better and things loosen up, we might be able to change that, but the great news is we're moving forward with an in-person graduation, and both high schools at Wheaton North and South and Wheaton North have not only created websites just for the class of 2021, but they continually send emails out to parents and students of the class of 2021, so they know there's things like the Powder Puff Game is going to be there, movie night, senior honors, all those traditional things that we've done before, we want to do again, they're going to look a little bit different. There's no dancing at prom, but we've worked with the post-prom groups to make sure that students will have an opportunity at the high schools and go out to dinner and then go to post-prom. So there's no dancing, but we're trying to recreate everything we can within the confines of the IDPH and DuPage County Health Restrictions. So the great news is, is we've gotten great feedback from the students and the parents, and it's driven a lot of what we're doing, and we're going to continue to communicate that out to the class of 2021, and I really feel like they are going to have a great end of the year.
So just a quick bit of context for a reminder, we have had a partnership with College of DuPage where the graduation ceremonies have traditionally been hosted. College of DuPage informed us a little earlier in the year that they were not going to be hosting those graduation opportunities this year. And so as we planned for that in-person opportunity, we shifted our attention to planning a graduation ceremony at each of our high schools that will be on the football field in order to support hosting an outdoor graduation, making sure that sound, visual, everything is, supports that effort. We secured some proposals from a couple of different partners that are helping us with both the staging of the graduation, all of the sound equipment, video boards, all of the pieces, that would be important to make sure that both the in-person opportunity is what we want it to be and that that opportunity is streamed for those that are not there in person. And so Miss Laikano secured several proposals. We did end up bringing to the board this evening the proposal from Delac Media Group. That's actually who we worked with last year on the virtual graduation ceremonies at the end of the year. They do really, really, really good work. We're confident in the support that they're going to provide. And again, I just, I think this is, it's an important graduation ceremony, ceremonies for us this year, and we want to do everything we can to do it right. So we traditionally spend about $35,000 on the graduation ceremonies at College of DuPage. Obviously, the contract this evening with Delac is for a little bit more, but we're also staging two separate graduation ceremonies rather than one stage, one setup that's simply being turned over. And so I'm confident that this will be a ceremony that we want to provide, obviously, for our community. Ms. Laikano, anything else you want to add to that? Okay, thank you. So our recommendation is the board do accept the proposal for Delac Media Group this evening.
Questions or comments?
I'm so excited that we are having this opportunity for our students, and I'm glad we thought out of the box and been able to do that and be able to provide some closure for not only students, but for everyone for this year to be able to leave on a high note, so, thank you.
I just have one question. Is there contingency if it's a bad weather day?
Yeah, so contingency plan one would be to shift to another date within the same weekend. If that's not going to be a possibility or we're looking at an extension, and they are working on what would be an indoor opportunity, but that's going to potentially slim down the number of guests that could be at the event.
Thanks.
So fingers crossed for good weather that weekend.
Do you know if the high schools have kind of reached out to the class of 2020 and tried to organize anything, or do you know if the students are doing that themselves? Right, 20, yeah, last year's group.
I do not know that, I'd be happy to follow up.
Yeah, I'm just curious if anything's happened.
We'd be happy to follow up on that, we'll estimate.
Okay, can I have any question, any other questions from board members? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to accept a proposal from Delac Media Group to provide the production for the district's two high school graduations as presented?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Is moved?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, approval of the high school graduation production vendor has been approved as presented. Next up is action item number five, which is approval to post elementary Spanish language arts curriculum for community review. Dr. Shure?
Yep, so Mrs. Murphy's going to kick this one off and I'm going to give background. I'm going to turn that right over to Mrs. Murphy and let her walk the board through the recommendations this evening.
Good evening. Tonight, Dr. Cuero and I are excited to bring an update on our Spanish language arts programming plans and our first grade Spanish language arts curriculum. And so at the conclusion of our presentation this evening, we'll be asking the board to approve the posting of the first grade curriculum that you'll be hearing about tonight. We have four guiding questions for our presentation this evening. They are: When is Spanish language arts required by the Illinois State Board of Education? What programming models were researched and recommended by our District 200 exploratory committee? What are the goals of Spanish language arts instruction? And how will Spanish language arts instruction be implemented in District 200? So we're going to start with our first question and a little background knowledge. So all school districts in the state of Illinois that have a full-time transitional bilingual education, or TBE, Spanish program, are required to teach Spanish language arts. TBE education is required when there are 20 or more students of the same language background within one school. And so here you'll see our elementary buildings that have TBE education this year. And so they are Johnson, Pleasant Hill, Washington, Bauer, and Sandberg. And the numbers that you see there are the current enrollment of students that are considered Spanish bilingual, and that includes our students from the Virtual Academy as well. And we have two buildings that have previously been TBE sites but are not this year, Hawthorne and Longfellow. So moving into the programming models that were researched and recommended by our exploratory committee. So as a reminder, last school year, we did form an exploratory committee and we brought a few updates to the Board of Education. And that committee was formed to research and recommend programming models for Spanish language arts, for TBE programs. We had a very diverse group of individuals that came together, multiple stakeholders, and those are outlined here in the slide. We were fortunate enough as well to have our final meeting just days before March 13th, 2020. And so this group was able to make their final recommendations before the pandemic started in our school district. Here you'll see an image that we have presented multiple times to the Board of Education, but also we used it every one of our exploratory committee meetings. And so the central circle that's in red represents our programming right now, which is bilingual Spanish. But by adding Spanish language arts, we recognize we'd be enhancing that program. The two blue circles on the edges there represent the two programming models that our exploratory researched this last year. So the first program that we researched is dual language. And as a reminder, dual language is a form of bilingual education in which classrooms teach all content areas in two languages. In our case, that would be Spanish and English. There are two programming models for dual language that are outlined below. I'll go into in a moment. And classroom composition actually determines which model is used. So there's one-way and there's two-way dual language. One-way dual language is when your entire classroom is made up of students of Spanish-speaking students. And then two-way is actually when you have 50% of a classroom that would be English-speaking students and 50% of that classroom would be Spanish-speaking background. Our exploratory committee developed five questions to do research on that are outlined there at the bottom of the slide. This slide really outlines the conclusions of the exploratory committee. At the end of our research, the exploratory committee made a determination that dual language would not be the programming model that we would recommend. And the reason why really sits in two buckets. It's really around enrollment and staffing. And so when we think about enrollment, and we go back to that slide I showed you earlier where it showed the TBE sites and the number of students at each building, our enrollment for Spanish bilingual students varies greatly across those five buildings. It goes from 122 students to 22 students. And dual language could really only be supported, a programming model, we would really only have the enrollment at two buildings to support that, Johnson and Pleasant Hill. And that is because at both of those schools, we have 10 or more Spanish bilingual students at every grade level. And so you would be able to have a classroom that would be 50/50. Now, think about staffing. The complexities of staffing come into play here. So if we were to run dual language, we would suddenly need to replace multiple English-speaking teachers with bilingual teachers. And at Johnson, it becomes even more complicated because at every grade level, we have at least 20 Spanish bilingual students or more. And so you would really have to have two dual language classrooms where teachers would have to, or students would have to share an English-speaking teacher and a Spanish-speaking teacher and flip-flop in the day. Moving into the other programming model that the exploratory committee looked into was FLESS, or Foreign Language Elementary School. And this is where a target language is taught three to five days a week as a separate subject. The goals are acquisition of listening, speaking, reading, and writing, or biliteracy, and understanding and appreciation of cultures. Again, the exploratory committee had the same five questions that they were applying to the research of the FLESS programming model. Here you're going to see the major conclusions of the committee around FLESS. First and foremost, the committee identified that the benefits of the FLESS model are very similar to the benefits of dual language programming. The committee also was looking at this model for first through fifth grade and was not looking at it for kindergarten because of our half-day programming at kindergarten. The committee did determine that FLESS would work best for schools with a larger Spanish bilingual population and where bilingual students are placed in multiple classrooms across a grade level. And that is because at those buildings, like at Johnson and Pleasant Hill, we already have a model where it would be co-teaching or a push-in model where the bilingual teacher and the English-speaking teacher are teaching together to service students in multiple classrooms across a grade level. The committee also explored staffing projections over a five-year time period. So if we were to utilize FLESS at Pleasant Hill and Johnson, where we have our largest Spanish bilingual populations, we would estimate that we'd need approximately one additional teacher. If we were to utilize FLESS at our six bilingual sites, and in this case, we did include Hawthorne because it's fluctuated between years of being a bilingual site, we would project that we would need about five and a half additional teachers. And if we were to utilize FLESS as a model, once again, for all students across our, all of our elementary schools, we would estimate we'd need about 13 and a half additional So in conclusion, with regards to the exploratory committee's recommendations, the exploratory committee has recommended that we utilize two programming models in District 200 for Spanish language arts. First, for our buildings that have a smaller Spanish bilingual population, the recommendation to is to enhance our current TBE model. And for our buildings with larger Spanish bilingual population, the recommendation to utilize FLESS model for all students in grades one through five. So we've outlined here a number of reasons why, and these bullets down here really emphasize three different reasons. They emphasize the ability to execute the programming, meeting the needs of our students in that social, emotional learning space, but also our equity goals. And so that first one is about our programming model. This will allow our bilingual teachers at Pleasant Hill and Johnson to continue to utilize a co-teaching or a push-in model to support both multilingual learners and English-speaking students in any classroom at those schools. We also believe that it will allow our schools to foster improved student-teacher relationships, peer relationships, and the homeschool connection by using a student's native language. And the last two really relate to our equity plan. It allows all students within a school to be a multilingual learner. And it allows our schools to provide experiences and instruction to develop students' appreciations of cultures and diversity, which is actually, that comes straight from our Vision 2022 strategic I'm going to now turn this over to Dr. Cuero to walk you through the last two guiding Guiding question three is what are the goals of Spanish language arts instruction? Our vision for Spanish language arts is to provide a program that will enhance students' cultural understanding while developing Spanish proficiency in listening, speaking, writing, and reading. The program values and promotes multilingualism, multiculturalism, and it also fosters a culture that advocates for equity and access. And our Spanish language arts goals are to teach students to communicate beyond their native language so that they can participate effectively in the world. We also want to enhance students' abilities to analyze, compare and contrast, synthesize, improvise, and examine cultures through a language and perspective other than their own. We seek to provide students with early exposure to Spanish at an optimal learning time in order to provide them with more opportunity to enhance and acquire language skills. We encourage and support the study of languages through a child's educational pursuit by adopting the program at the elementary level. And the program also allows students to connect grade-level core curriculum in a different language, which allows students to enhance learning and gain added meaning. We also provide the opportunity for all students at the school to learn a second language together. So all students are engaging in learning a second language and experiencing what bilingual multilingual is. The fourth guiding question is how will Spanish language arts instruction be implemented at our district? Beginning next school year, first grade students at Johnson and Pleasant Hill will receive Spanish language arts instruction, and this will be all students. We hope to expand the program every year at Johnson and Pleasant Hill by adding a grade level each year. Students will receive 60 to 90 minutes of push-in instruction per week. Our curriculum that was created is aligned to the actual road language standards, and we also have incorporated the proficiency goals. If you look at this slide, there's an inverted pyramid. And so the manner in which language is attained and students progress through language according to these standards is divided into different sections. You have novice, intermediate, advanced, superior, and distinguished. The first three levels are also broken down into sub-levels, low, medium, and high. Each grade level will target the actual novice standards, the novice proficiency benchmarks, and the novice proficiency indicators. The goal is for students to acquire novice mid to novice high proficiency in Spanish by the time they complete fifth grade. And students at that level, at the novice mid level, can engage in simple conversations. They can speak and write short sentences, read and understand brief text, among other skills. We're also exploring assessments that are aligned to act to measure proficiency at fifth At this time, I just want you to refer to the green packet, which has the curriculum for our first grade Spanish language arts. Now, one of the things that you'll notice is that our curriculum is cross-curricular. It incorporates units that are aligned to current first grade units. On the document, you will see the standards, benchmarks, proficiency indicators, and you'll also see some of the skills that the students will be able to do as a result of engaging in the programming. We expect each unit to last four to, I'm sorry, six to seven weeks, and it also interleaves Spanish cultural lessons. It supports the acquisition of grade-level Spanish and academic language. We know that we'll have to do some long-term, we'll have to continue our long-term programming plans. We're going to continue to focus our curriculum and program development in collaboration with Hubble, Franklin, and Monroe, along with the High School Road Language Department chairs. We will also support our implementation efforts, our staff, with professional development as needed. Our goal is for students who participate in the FLESS program, we want them to enter at Spanish III by the time that they are in high school, and we also want them to be able to earn the Seal of Biliteracy. The Seal of Biliteracy is a recognition that a student can receive on his or her diploma that recognizes that that student has attained a high level of proficiency in English and another language. The Seal of Biliteracy lets employers and colleges know that a student has mastered, that is, that a student is biliterate. Our next steps are to engage parents, communicate this information to parents. We will be providing this information to the parents of Johnson and Pleasant Hill. They will be receiving written communication with information on the Spanish language arts program and also our implementation plans for next year. Information for the program will also be made available on the district's EL website. We will also be planning virtual meetings for parents in first grade with students at Johnson and Pleasant Hill, and we hope to be able to provide the parents, provide parents with an overview of the program curriculum and answer any questions that they may have at that point. At this point, we recommend that the board approve the posting of the Spanish language arts curriculum as presented for community review. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Who, any board members want to offer to go first? Chris, you want to go first?
Are you looking at this as possibly a pilot program and seeing how it goes here to see if we want to expand FLESS to other schools down the road? Is that kind of our intention, that this is starting out as a pilot here and then this could possibly grow if we find it's a successful program?
Yeah, so I guess call your attention to the reality that there could be two different paths out of here. At its core, this is really a model for At its core, this is really a model for supporting bilingual learners at the two buildings that have a bilingual program. I think the ability to implement the model next year does simultaneously give us the opportunity to study the impact on that, to see if it's something that the board or the community would want to scale beyond just the bilingual site. So I don't want to say that it's just a pilot for the broader district because it's not really a pilot for those buildings. It is a new model for implementing the Spanish Language Arts standards at two bilingual, two of your bilingual sites. But I do think that it sets the stage to study as well the broader impact. So when you saw the last couple of slides that talked about the long-term goals of being able to enter students into Spanish III in high school and achieving the Seal of Bilinguality, that's something that kind of goes beyond, obviously, the service of just your multilingual learner. So that answers that. I think simultaneously, we want to put in place a good, solid model that serves your bilingual learners and at the same time, study that impact to see if in fact we'd want to scale it to other buildings beyond just the two that are here. I think you saw two different opportunities in the presentation where that could happen. That could happen through scaling it to other bilingual sites that just have perhaps smaller numbers of students or potentially scaling it across all of the elementary schools.
Thank you.
But I would suggest on this topic, but obviously, depending, you know, the board's decision to post this, I think this is something that the board would certainly want to hear an update on kind of early in the year, next year, to kind of hear the impact, some of the early feedback and results so that you could study that. Because again, if you are in fact on a scale, that may also scale a little bit the implementation timeline a little bit quicker than just kind of building it up through the grade level. But you're in a unique opportunity where I think you can kind of simultaneously do both. Marice, anything you want to add to that thought?
No, I think you handled that very well.
So this would come back to us at our May meeting to approve.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions related to the posting?
Do we have any other languages on the cusp of TBE requirements?
No, not at this time.
And then I know it would be five or six years down the road, but then is the plan with the middle schools to continue it?
Yes, we've had initial conversations with our middle schools. And I should also say, we had a middle school principal sit on our exploratory committee and was involved in every one of the meetings. And so we had conversations that we don't want students to stop in fifth grade. We want them to be able to continue at multiple grades in the middle school. And our plan is to, you know, continue having that conversation and doing that work next year.
Okay, thanks.
So on that note, so when you, and you know, this is down the line, but when they enter middle school, would we potentially need more classrooms at that point? Because there, because right now in middle school, they don't take foreign language until eighth grade, correct? Or have the opportunity to take a language? I guess because you would have kids in a Spanish class in sixth and seventh grade at that point, correct?
Yeah, so I guess we'll need a solution. What that solution will look like, I don't want to jump to that.
No, 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 I know, but I'm just thinking down the road.
Yes, I mean, if the long-term goal is to have a sequence from first grade to achievement of that Seal of Bilinguality in high school, you can't have a gap, right? We cannot take students to fifth grade and then say, a couple of years with nothing, and then pick it back up again. So there would need to be a solution. But again, just like I think districts that have implemented dual-language programs, there are a lot of different models for what that middle school transition can look like. And in fact, Hubble has already done some programming through a heritage Spanish program that there's some options there that are already in place that I think could be expanded. We would have to have a solution.
Okay. I just wonder, what Chris said too, I was kind of wondering. Wondering about, you know, expanding to other schools or, you know, down the road. I think that's definitely something to look at. And the other question, if, you know, if there are parents at other schools that one of our 11 other elementary schools are, who are really wanting to be a part of this program, could this potentially be part of a permissive transfer? You know, if parents wanted to, you know, really get their kids into this, into Johnson or Pleasant Hill?
Yeah, so permissive transfers are always space available, but permissive transfer certainly would still be a play.
Thank you for all of the work too. I'm very excited about this and I really appreciate all the work put into this. So, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So the objective here is that both English-based students as well as Spanish will have the exposure to this program?
Correct.
And the end objective is that those students at the end of five years in this case will have command of both? Novice level, is that the objective?
Yes. So there's multi tiers in the novice level. And so the goal would be not just introduction, but it's called novice-mid or novice-high.
Okay. So again, a Spanish-based student will have a novice understanding of English.
Right, and our Spanish-speaking students, we're certainly going to have the opportunity to expand their academic language beyond just their conversational language in Spanish, so.
Okay. Will Heritage be part of the program or will be?
We currently have, as Dr. Schiller indicated, we currently have Heritage Spanish at our middle school. And, you know, Dr. Pueyo, do you want to speak to how we can differentiate it within the elementary classroom?
So, one of the things that we know is that our Spanish-speaking students are going to be at different levels. And so, you know, there is the need for, there will be the need for the teacher to differentiate the different levels. But when you look at the standards, you're able to differentiate even within that novice level. There's the low, medium, and high. And so it really depends on, you know, looking at the individual student, what the student's language needs are and developing something that really is specific to the student. So I would say that some of our students, they can speak. They've mastered social language, but the academic language is not there. And so we're really focusing on developing that academic language, which does look different. And so our hope is that we can continue to foster that academic language with our Spanish-speaking students. And the other piece is that through this model, our students are going, our bilingual students are going to continue getting Spanish academic language instruction even after they exit the program. Because as we said, in the TBE model, it's only required when students are in the EL program. But with this program model, even students that exit can continue to still learn and expand their language skills.
And I guess my last one is the students are going to receive 16 to 90 minutes of instructions per week. Not the word cost, but what is the alternative if they were not in this at another school? Are they missing something or gaining something? What is the?
Sure, so, thank you. It's 16 to 90 minutes, or if you think about it, 10 to 20 minutes a day. And so we have had conversations on how to find time creatively and repurpose time. So specifically, let's take first grade because that's where our conversations have been this year in doing that curriculum development. A traditional part of first-grade classrooms is calendar time. Calendar is something that isn't always something that's absolutely necessary. We could repurpose something like calendar and replace it with the Spanish Language Arts. So our teachers are really thinking about how to repurpose time. And also, I want to say too, in our classrooms, we also have bilingual classroom teachers at the primary level. So they're going to be able to integrate that throughout a school day as well, depending on the unit that they're teaching at the time. And so we're being very purposeful in how we can use our time well.
Okay, so will every teacher at Johnson, for instance, be able to? Okay, so that's why we're adding staff to support.
Yeah, we don't need to add staff for next year. We already have bilingual staff in place. And so if there isn't a bilingual teacher who, in the classroom, who can deliver that instruction, then a teacher pushes into the classroom or co-teaches.
Okay, so there'll be movement within, okay.
But that's something we already do at Pleasant Hill and Johnson.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I just had one, most of my questions were kind of already answered. Did I hear that all first-grade students at the two schools are going to be in this program?
You heard that correctly. All first-grade students at Pleasant Hill and Johnson.
So it's not a choice. If you're a current kindergarten and you move into first grade next year at Pleasant Hill or Johnson, you're going to be in this, you're going to get the 16 to 90 minutes. What happens if a parent doesn't, prefers not to for the children as they go into first grade?
Well, this is a part of our curriculum. And so we're not, we aren't really allowing the opt-out process.
You wouldn't let a parent opt their child out of Language Arts? You wouldn't let him opt him out of math or science or social studies? This is a part of a curriculum that those?
Well, that's a, that's a good point.
And I wasn't trying to say that flippantly. Genuinely, we are proving it as a part of the curriculum at the building. So I guess all I would say is that while we would certainly work diligently with families around that, I suppose the only option would be for a family to consider a permissive transfer to a different building. But at the building, this would be a part of a curriculum. And to be honest, I think it's a value, it would be incredibly valuable part of the curriculum. So I think the communication step she saw outline, the goal would be to clarify what it is that students are gaining out of the opportunity. But it would not be kind of an opt-in or opt-out thing within the building. It'd be a part of the curriculum.
And I guess to that point, I think as part of that communication is going to be important that we, to Jim's question is like, there's nothing that's going to be lost. So somebody's going to look at this and say, I'm 16 to 90 minutes. I've lost something. You know, what is my student going to lose?
Right.
That I don't have a choice in. So I think that's going to be an important conversation and communication point as we introduce this to parents.
Yep, exactly.
Yes, did you have parents or community members on the exploratory committee in the first place?
Yes, we had parents. We had, we also had members from our BPAC, our bilingual advisory committee were a part of that exploratory committee.
Okay. Because I do remember having a decent number of parents who spoke to us in person about how they wanted to see this happen. And I'm just kind of wondering where those families fall in the district versus the schools where we're actually going to start implementing it. Is there a connection there? Are we going to have people concerned that what they asked for is being implemented, but they're not, don't happen to be connected to the right schools to take part?
I think if I heard that correctly, you're asking about the parents that previously spoke to the board. I believe they were at Pleasant Hill or Johnson. Families, but a number of them did certify on the committee where this work was done. So again, I guess all I would say back to, I think, one of the earlier questions, certainly there's a permissive transfer option available. Should this be something they'd want to give their children up?
Can I ask though, and me relating that, the objective of this program, of the FLESS program, is to help our non-English-speaking students learn English, correct? That this is a program that's designed, and I'm sorry if I'm not saying this correctly, but it's a program designed around our non-English-speaking, but we have to deliver, as you said here, the Spanish Language Arts goals that, so they can learn English and communicate, correct? And that we are, and that we are able with the FLESS program to engage our native English-speaking students into this program. Is that correct?
Yes, and the only thing I will add on to that is EL and bilingual programming, under that large umbrella, the ultimate goal is proficiency in English. But if you have a bilingual program, the expectation is you continue to support a native language because we know the native language assists in learning English. And so we have Spanish as our bilingual program. And across the country, we certainly know Spanish is a fast-growing second language. And so this is where the state of Illinois has asked all school districts that have a Spanish bilingual program to ensure they are developing Spanish bilingual students their native language and they're enhancing that native language. So as Dr. Pueyo mentioned before, they have academic language. They can be bilingual. So that's an ultimate goal in that.
Right, okay. So I guess my point is, is that these two schools, this is where we have our large majority of Spanish-speaking students, which is why we are implementing this program at those two schools. It's part of this program that we need to, of offering Spanish Language Arts. And then if we can, I think, kind of to what Chris's point earlier is that as we see how this works, that maybe then we can roll it out to some of our other elementary schools that don't have as large of a Spanish-speaking population, that then it would be, in those schools, be more of a learning Spanish program, right?
Yes, and just to quantify it for you, like a school, one of your second, like third-largest bilingual programs, Washington, they have three students that will be in first grade that are bilingual next year.
Okay.
That's vastly different than Johnson that has 25.
Right.
So it really sits in the number of students and to be able to deliver that instruction in the best way possible.
Right, okay. So I guess it's kind of a long-winded way of saying there is a reason that this is happening at Johnson and Pleasant Hill and not at the other schools. That it's not, you know, there is a reason these schools were chosen. And, you know, in later years, if we can roll it out as part of a larger program, then great. But this is where we need to start because that's where the population.
I think this is exciting. I really welled on. I'm really excited about it. When my kids pass through Pleasant Hill and Monroe and North, it would be fantastic to have that available as a part of the curriculum. So I'm excited for our students. I just, I think about a couple of kids sitting in a room, sharing a language that don't share a language right now, right? That's awesome. And I think that's part of the intent. You know, it's not just legal compliance. There's just some really cool experiences our kids are going to have. You know, multi, learning different cultures, learning what each other's about. I think it's fantastic. Thank you. Yeah, I think, as I said in my opening comments, this was an issue brought to our, not brought to our attention. It was already at our attention. But a group of parents, a couple of years ago, expressed interest in a dual-language program. And this was kind of the outgrowth of that. I do recall at the time that there was some references to all the other school districts around us that were, that were offering this. And I recall there was a chart, kind of the different types of programs at different schools. That actually, that actually sounds very familiar, all these other school districts around us doing, doing a program. But, so we've got research on what all the other school districts have done. And so this program that we're outlining is really specific to our circumstance, at the individual schools, and what our objectives are for our students. That's just kind of my takeaway from two years ago to now. So again, this is just a post, post-ist for public review and comment, or community review, I guess. And we'll be back, back to us the next business meeting at the beginning of May. Any other questions before we take a vote? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the posting of the elementary Spanish Language Arts curriculum for community review as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton. Seconded by Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
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 Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes. Okay, the action item to post the? Okay, the action item to post the elementary Spanish language arts curriculum for review has been approved as presented, and our sixth of seven action items, number six is approval of the 2021-2022 fee schedule. Dr. Shuler, information?
I'm going to hand it over to, to Mr. Farley, this is typically the time of year where the, the board is looking at the fee schedule for next year, and so I think in recommendation tonight, we're, we're bringing some, some good news or good opportunity for families, so I'll hand it off to Mr. Farley.
Thank you, Dr. Shuler, as we, the administration started to look at the fee schedule for the upcoming school year, we started to take into account some of the federal dollars that were going to be utilized by the school district, and how that impacted how we normally use the fees that we collect, especially in the area of technology and, and some of the curriculum-related items that these fees helped to support. So as we looked at that, we, we decided we could reduce our tech fee that is normally included within the course, overall current fee, as well as a general reduction in fees related to some of those curriculum subscriptions and other items, as well as some other smaller items that are within the, the fees that we could reduce at the middle school and high school level. So what we're bringing to you tonight is a fee reduction list for the general fees that equates to about fifty percent on average over the levels, fifty-two percent reduction at kindergarten level, a forty-five percent reduction, one through five, middle schools, about a fifty-two percent reduction, and high schools, about a fifty-one percent reduction overall. We have, we basically will have a revenue shift with that federal dollar, those federal dollars that we've talked about, that will help to offset the revenue that normally comes in to the school district. So tonight, we will ask the board to approve the fee schedule for next year, some of the other fees that we generally have included for consumables and such will be charged at cost as they always are, there is no changes to the athletic or any of those fees, those will remain static, we will reset the all-day kindergarten fee back to the original amount of thirty-six hundred dollars for the year, which if you recall, two years ago, we brought to the board a four hundred dollar reduction on that overall cost for all-day kindergarten, and it was reduced this past year because of obviously the impact of COVID, so we are asking the board to approve that at thirty-six hundred dollar level. We'll take any questions that you may have on, on fees.
Any questions or comments?
I think this should be considered a one-time event because of the federal dollars, right? This is, you know, you know, going forward in future years, is this becoming a new fee schedule, or are we saying that this is a one-time reduction that will be restored in the future potentially, or whatever? The reason I say that is we've had a lot of discussion over the last few years about fees, and, you know, we talked about increasing and so on and so forth, so I guess my question is, is this reduction related to fee or federal money that goes referred to, or is this now a more permanent step going into the future?
Yeah, I think it's an option certainly made possible by the federal dollars, I guess I will note, and as we talk in, at the April Committee of the whole meeting, we have the ability to utilize those federal support dollars over the next, well, three fiscal years, and so some of the technology costs that we're actually supporting through those grant dollars, I anticipate us continuing to support for at least the, the next couple of years, so I don't, I don't necessarily see this as a permanent reset of the, the fee cost, but I don't see it just as a one-year event that's going to go right back up to, to the level, I believe we're going to be able to continue to support those revenues through the, the federal grant for at least a couple of years, and then perhaps look with a, a future board on how we, we phase back into, to the fees. It's a lot easier to cut by half than it is to double at one point in time in terms of the impact on, on families, so I think we're going to, we want to be thoughtful about in the future how perhaps we, we phase back in, and if we find that we're able to kind of address through other revenue opportunities in the future, where we could continue to, to support fees at this level, and what's good for, for families, so I, I think it's a little bit of both, but makes sense, I think the avenue to do this is the, the federal recovery dollars, and I think we need to see moving forward if we believe we can continue to support these expenditures without having to come back to, to the, to the future, and I think that'll be a future discussion, but I don't think it's just one year, I think we're going to have the ability to support it.
What's our total fees that we have raised, you know, prior to COVID? What's the end?
Probably a couple million dollars.
So it's a, it's a significant reduction in the.
It is, so this specifically, the adjustment is about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so on, on, you know, again, the expenditures are not going away, but the revenue's supporting that, it's an adjustment of about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's going from local fee collection to federal grant.
Okay, so we're, just to clarify, we're approving the fee schedule for next school year. Any other questions or comments? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the 2021-2022 student fee schedule as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matheson, Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Okay, the fee schedule for next school year has been approved as presented, and then finally, our last action item, number seven, is the extension of the Reed and Warrenville Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement through the 2022-2023 school year. Information from Dr. Shuler?
Yeah, so our current collective bargaining agreement actually runs through the 2021, no, 2021, 2022 school year, sorry, I did say that right, runs through the 2021, 2022 school year, we began some conversation with WWEA really about a month and a half ago about the possibility of extending the agreement for one additional year, it's under the same financial terms of the, the current agreement, those are outlined in the memorandum of understanding, it was attached to the, to the board agenda item, I think as, as we shared with the board at the time, that this collective bargaining agreement was approved, I think this is a fair and very reasonable collective bargaining agreement, as the board will, will remember, this was the collective bargaining agreement that outlined the compensation schedule that replaced the traditional salary schedule, introduced micro credentials as a professional development, and skill enhancement opportunity for, for our teachers, had financials that were tied to cost of living with a floor and a, and a ceiling, and so we are simply recommending that the agreement be extended for one additional year under those same terms, so this was worked out, it was approved, ratified by WWEA, and so now it's in front of the board this evening for your consideration and approval.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I think that in, you know, whatever number of years back when we negotiated this agreement, it was very novel, there was a lot of steps, the step program was removed, you know, we put in the credentials, we did many kind of, what I felt were novel issues at that time, and I was a little worried about, you know, whether that would be, you know, keep everybody happy, you know, it was a, I felt a very good, you know, fair agreement from the board's point of view, and I'm, I'm glad to see the, the union and the staff is basically saying that they're, you know, they've agreed to that novel new program, and, you know, this extension, in, in these times in particular, after the challenges this year, you know, is very positive in my mind, I think it, you know, takes something off the table that we've seen in, you know, in the city that, you know, has been a really, you know, not only COVID, but all kinds of labor issues and so on, so this is really a, a great step in my opinion, and I thank the, the union to, you know, for their, you know, forethought on this, and, and the staff obviously to create the circumstance, so I'm highly supportive of the programs.
Yeah, I, I look at this and I think about, if we didn't approve this, we'd be, you know, in negotiations in the second half of next school year, and I think that the value, one of the values of this is we're able to focus next school year on learning acceleration, learning recovery, you know, kind of getting all the way out of, hopefully getting all the way out of COVID and getting through our next school year, and so I think it will enable us to, to focus on what's the most important right now, which is student learning, and revisit this when the time is right, and a lot of, a lot of that's passed us hopefully, and there's a lot more known about what might happen in Springfield, which is always one of those risk areas, so I fully support this and thank the, the union for bringing this to us. All right, any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding and collective bargaining, bargaining agreement extension with the WWEA for the 22-23 school year as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Matheson? Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree, Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Okay, the extension of the WWEA collective bargaining agreement for one extra year has been approved as presented, so that concludes our action items, next up is our social-emotional learning feature.
Thank you, good evening, members of the Board of Education, pleasure again to speak on, on behalf of the good work going on in relation to social-emotional learning in our district, and in tonight, just a really brief report, but I want to highlight the importance that clubs and activities play in the role of our, of our kids' lives, so specifically tonight, I'm going to highlight some of the work happening at one of our elementary schools, Hawthorne Elementary, but I think it's important to note that really the story around clubs, activities could be told at any of our schools, albeit it's a little bit newer concept at our elementary levels, back to 2018 is when we really started compensating some of those clubs and stipends, allowing a few clubs to be taken care of at our elementary level. At Hawthorne, like many of our elementary schools, they're utilizing student clubs as an opportunity and a pathway to connect kids to school, a few of their clubs that they have are a running club, they have a leadership student patrol club, which involves their older students, helping to patrol their sidewalks for safety, but also giving them various mentor and leadership roles, they also have a student council, so these activities are not only student leadership opportunities, but they're, they're really informal social experiences, right? So when we think about social-emotional learning, really the learning and the growth of those skills happens kind of twofold, at the younger levels, we have like a direct instruction model, which can happen through some curriculum and instructional experiences in a purposeful, direct instruction and teachable manner, but the real work happens during the experiences that kids have, right? And the experiences that kids have, many times, don't even happen on school, during school day, but happen on school day, but it's by us providing the structure of the opportunity, right? So these are really a key strategy, not only to strengthen relationships and connections, but to grow all the kind of informal soft skills that we know lead to kids being successful beyond their time with us here in District 200. I highlight this tonight, and it really has, we vision and think about and work in our plans as we look to 2021, 2022 school year, connection and reconnecting is going to be at the forefront of our work, we currently have a group actively looking at our clubs and our activities and the experiences we're giving kids at all levels, elementary, middle and high school, because certainly we want that to be a part of, of our plan in a really robust and bold way that has moved on to next year. So really the connections are across the board in our SEL work, when we look at our SEL framework, two connections I draw really quickly are to the learning piece of it, I mentioned it earlier, informally through the experience, and informally through some of the drug things that can happen, but then the connection, right? Kids get a chance not only to connect to their sponsor or their teacher that might not be their classroom teacher, or personally see much, and they get a chance to see kids that they might not see during the day as well, so again, really good stuff happening, but I think this is an area we want to focus on as we look to next year, to say, how can we even be better in this area? So I'll stop and take any questions if they're ready.
One of the things I always worry about are kids who don't engage, they're, they're not, they're typically not the ones that sign up for the clubs, they're not the ones that sign up for the sports, they just kind of blend, and, you know, I love this connectedness concept we've talked about, have you seen that play out at the elementary school level as well? I'm thinking about how do you get kids pulled in to the clubs?
Yeah, we have seen that at all levels, I think, so we've certainly seen that at the elementary level, and I think our principals initially have tried to be creative in the ways that they get kids to connect, I would tell you, I think we've actually probably had more experience with that from what I hear, at the middle and high school level, of clubs, really playing that role in it, and playing a unique role to engage kids, or many times, kids are taking the lead on their interests, and that's how clubs are forming, if they can get a sponsor, right? At the elementary level, when I, I highlighted a few clubs right here that are, that are pretty common, but we also have some clubs that I think reach students that may not be traditionally involved in some of these pieces, so I, I've seen successes with it, but I would say we can get better in that area too.
Thank you.
I have a couple comments, the, I, I think that, you know, reflecting back on this year with the, particularly the emotional side of this thing, it's, you know, I have seven grandkids that are in different schools and, you know, so on, and the impact of not being in school has been so tremendous on them and their friends, it's just, you know, I'm so proud of how our district has performed in this period of time, it's, it's amazing, and, and the, you know, it's, it's really great, and I, I'm so happy the kids are back, you know, it's really, really good, you know, so I thank you.
Thank you, and I think, you know, specifically at the elementary level, that's one of a natural step in the social-emotional arena, where we could certainly take just to have kids actively engaged in the in-person experience, so thank you.
I have one question, well first, kind of piggybacking on Jennifer, having a, or in a high school, and I can tell you my middle schooler's very happy to be back in school every day this week, so thank you for the work on that, I can definitely see a very, a difference in his, in his attitude and demeanor, and at the high school level, one thing I want to ask on this topic of clubs and engaging students, and because I have a freshman that I'm thinking about going into next year because the opportunities were limited just because of COVID and, you know, gathering, and I know that they're starting to come back, but I'm just wondering if, like we do for freshmen, I mean, fortunately, I was able to go through kind of that freshman orientation night or whatever, where all the clubs had all the tables out, and kids could walk around and talk to some of the high school kids, and, and I'm just kind of wondering if there's like a light version of that that we can maybe do for, again, for our freshmen as they go into their sophomore year, to sort of reintroduce them to all of these clubs and activities that, you know, maybe not in such a grand way, but just a little bit of a concerted effort to engage those, the freshmen who are rising sophomores again, just because they missed, they kind of missed that in their freshman year, so it's just a comment I have about at the high school level.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, certainly something to share with the team, and, and you know, as Dr. Slodgy mentioned it, that I think we've, we've continued to recognize that, I think the struggle kids have experienced is this, this combination not just of, of learning loss, but schooling loss, right? And all of the things that are encompassed in school, and activities is a, a significant part of that, so again, I just, I don't want to understate that as we talk about learning acceleration plans, SEL has to be such a critical part of that, and that's why we're really bringing this to you tonight to forecast that we, we see bringing additional resource into this whole area of student activity next year, and, and so I bring this all the way back around to your idea, Susan, because if we're going to put additional resource in student activities, we want kids there, right? We want to make sure it's serving kids, and one way to do that is to make sure that kids have kind of a, a really robust reminder in the fall of those opportunities that, that exist. We, we had a goal, it's on our dashboard, to have every student engaged in at least one activity at the, at the school, and I absolutely see doubling down on that opportunity next year, I think it's so critical.
Yeah.
For the connectedness in the, in the fall as we embrace it, I do just mention it, but we, we, not, not different, but we've really tried to reshape our vocabulary to, to not really talk about next year in sort of the, like the crisis, let's get through mode, but let's really embrace what next year has in store for our community, our, our students, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunities that are going to sit in front of us to. I'm excited about the opportunities that are going to sit in front of us to really look at, you know, those opportunities as we resume our normal schedule.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll talk more about this at the next meeting, the Committee of the Whole, but as part of that third round of federal money under the American Recovery Plan, 20% of that money that flows to each individual school district is kind of put in a box for learning recovery and emotional wellness, and so a lot of that stuff we'll get into next, at the next meeting. But know that some of that, some of that federal money is targeted and earmarked towards the kind of stuff that we have been talking about and will be talking about in the future.
Yeah, and we've had some incredibly exciting conversations just in the last couple of weeks about what that is going to look like and how we're going to make sure we're supporting students in our buildings with that allocation.
All right. Thank you for that, Dr. Sagi. We have no discussion items tonight. We do have four written reports that were attached. We had the monthly financial report, the Freedom of Information Act report, the Board Communication Log, and the Citizens Advisory Committee Report. Any questions from board members on those? I do know, is it next Wednesday we have the next Citizens Advisory Committee meeting?
I have one question on the financials. Bill, maybe you can answer this. How's our cash flow looking between now and the end of the year? Are we, are we going to be okay to, you know, have sufficient monies to pay all the bills and so on?
Yes, we're in good shape as far as our cash flow goes. The state has actually been pretty responsive in paying their categorical payments. We've gotten, you know, the first two quarterly payments by the, basically a month later than their voucher, which is, they sound late, but in the world we've been living in lately, it's refreshing that they're paying that quickly compared to prior years. And we're waiting to see if next week, if it holds true, that we'll get that third quarter cap. But otherwise, yes, cash flow wise, we're doing okay.
And what about, I mean, there's no thought out there that the real estate tax bills will be delayed or anything like that?
There's not. A good, actually Glenn Henry reached out to talk about the county. I do believe that the county has considered something similar to what they did a year ago that provides an opportunity for kind of a needs-based delay payment, but that did not hurt the cash flow within the district last year. I don't anticipate that it would. So I don't see anything at the county level that's going to stand in the way of the local payments.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda is reports from board members. We don't have any committee reports attached to this. Any other reports from board members who wish to--
So teaching and learning, as you know, I've been taking some field trips this year, and this, is it Monday? Monday, made a visit at Wheaton Warrenville South and was able to see what a day looks like in high school today, and, you know, experienced what lunch looks like, where there were, I believe, two, two or three students per table. It was, it was nice to see some normalcy back again. We were able to watch even what hallway looks like. Kids are very respectful and following. There's tape down the hallways, and I mean, they're doing what they need to do. So that was, that was great to see. We went into some classrooms. It was interesting to see PE. We had a chance to talk with one of the PE teachers who was doing a dance class, and I mean, it's challenging. You've got kids at home, and how he had structured so that kids at home, like there were, I think, twins that were able to, you know, do their dance together, there were students with, you know, folding a computer as they're talking with people who are at home and trying to come up with dance ideas. I mean, it was still being very creative, but it was great to see kids even in small groups again within the building, the collaboration that's happening. I felt like we're moving back into some normalcy. So that was, that was really, that was really exciting to see. We're doing another field trip next week to see middle school. So we're going to Monroe and see what lunch and everything there looks like as well on Tuesday, so.
Any other board members? Dave? A couple of quick things. You know, first I do want to, well, I was talking to a friend who's also a school administrator, and just talking about the weariness. You know, I mean, the community feels it, parents feel it, kids feel it, but, you know, it's really been impactful on, and so I just want to thank, you know, Dr. Schuler, all the staff, principals, assistants, principals, teachers, I mean, they've really been put through the wringer in the past year, and I think they've really, you know, held up well, and I continue to be proud of the, of our district, especially compared to, you know, those around us. So I think that's really good. Excited about the Spanish. My freshman in college is a Spanish education major, so I'm going to talk to her tomorrow and tell her not to change, because it means it's growing job demand for her, so that's a good thing. And then we did have an Equity Task Force meeting, and I do continue to be encouraged by the progress we're making on kind of bite-sized, specific, actionable items, and, you know, I feel a lot better about what we can do collectively and what I can do to help, you know, in that area. So that's, I think we're doing, I think it's been really good with Dr. Poyo leading it. It's, I think it's a very positive movement that we're making there. Good, thanks, Dave. Anybody else? I have one thing. It's that time of the year again where we get to talk about IASB resolutions. Yeah, it's very exciting, isn't it?
I love it!
So I don't know if everybody received it, but I received an email from IASB that submission deadline is Wednesday, June 23rd. So that means we would have two regularly scheduled meetings, May 12th and June 9th, as a board to discuss if we would like to put together a resolution, and then we would have to kind of not really vote on it as a board, but agree as a board that we want to submit something. So I just asked, it's all an online submittal this year, maybe it was last year, I don't recall, but ask board members to think about ideas, issues, something that might have come through this school year, old issues. We can bring it back to the board May 12th, we'll have it on the agenda as a, maybe, I don't remember, do we put it, we probably put it as a discussion item. If anybody has interest in that, just email me and we'll, we can bring it, bring it back. Any questions on that? Okay, topics for future discussion. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, we have a couple important topics coming up. Number one, we'll have our master technology plan update. We will also present and discuss the updated community engagement plan as we think about the next year and what that might look like, and then, and then the strategy for using of the federal COVID relief dollars and how that might impact our programs and investment over the next couple of years. So those are the three topics for the future. Our next regular meeting is May 12th, which will be here at Hubbard Middle School. We have two other meetings coming up. I just mentioned the April 28th Committee of the Whole, which will also be at 7:00, and then on Tuesday, May 4th, we will have a board reorganization meeting where we welcome our new board members and take a couple of action items to reseat our board and do some other things that we have to do every year, every two years at that time. So that's what we have ahead of us. I'm assuming we have no public comments for this evening. We do have one closed session item. So I move to adjourn a closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under 5 ILCS 120/2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 1, and collect and negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules on one or more classes of employees under 5 ILCS 120/2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 2. Can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wong. Mrs. Hutchinson, you--
Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Boo?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. We're going to adjourn to closed session, and there is no action going to be taken following that closed session. Thanks.